Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for attending the April 15, 2014 City of Troy Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Before we get started, I'm going to read a brief primer as to how we function. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is defined as a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant granting of the variance. Procedurally, the Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present; then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain the justification of the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any persons wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and, when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should then identify themselves with their name and address and indicate their relationship to the property in question. For example, you're a next-door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera. At that point, the individual should state whether they are in favor or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman, and comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, which means to delay, the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. Mr. Evans, could you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Bloomingdale.
Here.
Mr. McCown.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Krent.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here. Moving on to item number two, which is approval of minutes from our February 18, 2014 meeting, I would ask of the Board if there are any comments or corrections regarding the minutes. If not, if there would be a motion to approve...
Move the approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, can you call the question on approval of the minutes?
Mr. McCown.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Item three, approval of agenda. As the agenda currently sits in its printed form, are there any questions, comments, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move forward with item four, which is hearing of cases. We have one case tonight. Paul, could you please give us a rundown on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's case is a variance request from Gail Amoro for GPRZ Real Estate LLC. It's for property on Coolidge Highway, addressed as 6530, 6550, and 6566 Coolidge Highway. As printed in the agenda, the request is, "In order to split a parcel into four parcels, variances to the required 100-foot minimum lot frontage and width." Three of the proposed parcels are proposed to have 90 feet of frontage and width; the fourth is proposed to be 98.31 feet wide. I'd like to direct everybody's attention to the overhead monitors behind and on either side of the Board members, where I'll just briefly provide some additional details on this request. The overhead there shows the area where the subject property is located. The property is on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of South Boulevard. In the slide that we see here, it is the property outlined in red at the bottom of the slide. I've taken the same aerial and zoomed in a little closer and outlined the parcel in red. For a different perspective, there are three buildings on the property, two houses, and one greenhouse. I've taken that similar map and overlaid in color zoning district classifications for the property. All the properties we see in yellow are single-family zoned. The subject property and surrounding property, the south and north, are zoned R1B. The yellow property across Coolidge Highway is zoned R1A, and kitty-corner to the northwest is an environmental protection district. This is one of the surveys submitted by the applicant to explain their request, and I've outlined three of the four parcels to provide a little clarification. The requests they're seeking are for lot width and frontage, and the bottom three, or southerly three parcels, and I would like to say Coolidge Highway is on the left of this, the bottom three parcels are proposed to be 90 feet wide, and the top parcel is proposed to be 98.31 feet wide. Those same, both parcels, or all parcels, are required to have 100-foot lot width and lot frontage. The proposed lot widths and lot frontages are the same. So I'll turn it back over to the Board for any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. And one question I have to confirm is that portions of the eastern and central parts of the parcel that exists today are in a floodplain?
That is correct.
Okay. The floodplain and the spray drain which goes over to the nature center, is there anything specific to the drain that has, that cannot be, and I don't know that this would happen in the development plan proposed by the petitioner, but is there anything specific to that drain that has to remain otherwise it affects the nature center? Is there anything in particular that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of anything with the property, the floodplain, that affects the nature center.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any additional questions for staff? Mr. Courtney?
Yes. If the parcel were divided into three pieces instead of four, would they need to be here?
They would have enough width and frontage, and they would not need variances.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Evans, the one parcel that's kind of in the middle there, I can't tell if that's parcel E or what exactly that one is.
I think it's C.
C?
Yeah.
It looks like it has frontage, and then it takes off the rest of the property to the back. Is that correct?
Yes, it fans out.
Okay.
Easterly.
All right. And under the current zoning for the property, the three smaller parcels could be developed as residential, and that middle huge one could maintain its current non-conforming status?
No. I'm going to back up a slide, two slides. The borders of the property look like that. Each new parcel, and this would be a total of four new parcels being created, needs to have, along the front setback line, which is 50 feet beyond the proposed right-of-way line, a width and frontage of 100 feet. And actually, let me double-check the measurements for that parcel C. Parcel C is also proposed to be 90 feet wide and have 90 feet of frontage at the front setback line.
So, obviously, it may not be within our jurisdiction, but we really don't know why that property would kind of fan out like that. Where the use of it, we're not really sure, and maybe it's not within our purview?
I think if you thought it was pertinent, the applicant might be able to provide some insight as to why the proposed parcel split looks this way.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, so I understand, or we all understand, I just want to ask, at the end of the day, if this was approved, we'd have four new parcels, but because it'd be four new parcels, the 1975 previous zoning determination about the non-conforming use would go away, and these would have to be residential? I guess what I'm getting at is parcel C could not still have a commercial use?
Right. Well, the applicant has proposed, and the assessor has confirmed, that if indeed they were to split, be allowed to split these parcels as proposed, that greenhouse couldn't stay there.
Well, right, but...
And I believe the applicant has indicated in her application, and she can confirm this to you, some conditions she would agree to, including the uses in some of the buildings on the property that are proposed to be removed, which would be the southerly house and the greenhouse.
I understand.
So, it would expunge, to directly answer your question, it would expunge those uses.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bloomingdale?
Is there any requirement to maintain access to the property behind the proposed development? I don't know of any other area, or any other way on that. That creek runs around it, and it's surrounded by houses, so...
Are you saying the easterly part of the property?
Yes.
Yes, they could not, in effect, land-lock that property. The property would have to have access to Coolidge.
Can you dish, sorry, oh, gosh.
Eisenbacher.
Mr. Eisenbacher. I'm sorry. Thank you.
There was a little bit of mention, I believe, when I was reading it, about lot averaging in terms of the area, but obviously, you're averaging three small properties with one big giant property. Is there, I mean, using it mathematically, it'd be a huge standard deviation, as opposed to usually we have a lot more similar parcels that all are a little bit smaller to get that lot averaging. This seems like a very weird application of lot averaging to me.
Well, and I think the applicant can clarify, but part of her argument to explain to the Board the deviations does include a similarity to the concept in the zoning ordinance of lot averaging, and maybe she could better explain that to you as to what she is referring to.
Any additional questions before we bring up the petitioner? Could the petitioner please come forward? Evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gail Amoro, and I'm here to ask for a variance on the lots 6530, 6550, and To start off, the property has a very unique shape, and the property also has a lot of floodplain issues. When I first came here, we tried to work with the city with regard to running the greenhouse, and we found out that we weren't able to expand the greenhouse, and things didn't work out, and so we said, well, how can we use these parcels, or how can we make this a conforming use, and how would it work best for the community and the surrounding area? I started working with the city and then with the engineers, and the engineers looked at the property, and they said, well, you would have a lot of engineering work to do if you were to separate it and break it off in certain ways because of all these unique characteristics. And they came up with lots of different plans, and so when you were asking questions as to, well, why did I set it up this way? We actually had probably went through 10, 15 different drawings with the engineers, and they had come up with first a drawing that would take and split the properties all the way on the south side and make it into about seven or eight lots. And then they would go in and they would ask the MDEQ to try to be able to work with us with regard to the floodplain, and I wanted to try to keep it as simple as possible. And so they made the recommendation of saying, well, let's split this thing into four parcels, trying to keep it smaller, because when I had talked with the city, the city said, well, let's, people are not looking for these really large pieces of land. And I said, well, what am I going to do with that back parcel back there? And they said, because you have to have access. So what I said was, could I just take one parcel and make it a really large parcel, and then if a person chose that they wanted to, because there's no floodplain in the back of the property, could they build back in the, you know, the back part of the property? So that's why I left that open, that one there, so that they would have an access road, so they could either build at the front of the property, depending upon if they, you know, got permission from you, or if they would be in the back of the property where there's no floodplain issue. And so that's why we left that property that way. Now, in terms of configuring, there are so many different options that we could have configured this property. I didn't know how to present it to you, and I said, I'll be open to anything. If we want to expand it and, you know, take on a little bit more, each parcel, take on a little bit more of the property to make it, you know, acceptable to you, I would do that. So it's very, very difficult to work with because of the floodplain issues, because of the way that it's, the shape of it. And so basically, I had to rely upon the engineers to say, this is a good configuration. It would work if you were to remove the greenhouse, and they also said that probably the house to the south side of the property would also have to be removed. And then I had talked to the city, and I said, you know, is there a possibility that I could rely upon Section 10.01, reducing the average lot size so that I would have the 90 width, just to try to make them smaller so that some, you know, that it would be not these huge parcels of land? And with it having the 90-foot restriction, that's why I presented to you to say, you know, is it possible that I could go ahead and use the lot averaging to split this parcel? The parcel, at the, at the front of the parcel, or at the front of the property on Coolidge Highway, they have, the engineers estimated that was about 404 feet across. So at Coolidge Highway, I have where I would have the 100-foot lot requirement. It's just because the property narrows, and if the property would have stayed, you know, consistent all the way, like a lot of parcels do, then I wouldn't have an issue with splitting it into the four parcels, but because of it narrowing, I have the issue of it, you know, at the setback line, that's where the 90-foot comes into play. So because it does have the footage in the front, again, because it narrows, it causes difficulties, and I, the difficulties with the floodplain, the difficulties with the narrowing, and then trying to split the property and try to keep it consistent with the area around the homes in the area, that's why the engineers thought that this was a good configuration.
Okay. So to summarize, if you would, your hardship is all presented on the dimension, dimensions of the land?
No, the hardship is because of the floodplain. The hardship is also because of the shape of the property, and those two factors just make it almost difficult, because we can't do any expansion with the greenhouse. It's another, it's, I don't know that that's really, that's a hardship, because that's something that I'm willing to give up, but just because of the floodplain issues, there's not a whole lot you can do with the back portion or a lot of the front portion of the property, that, and it, you know, the narrowing and the shape of it.
And as I understand this, just from a kind of a big-picture point of view, is if you're successful, it would be your intent to remove all structures and then retail the parcels?
The greenhouse, I would be demolishing, and then the one home to the south.
Okay.
The home to the north, that one would remain.
Okay. Is your, is your intention at that point, then, to develop the land?
I don't, I don't want to. I have no expertise in this. My expertise is at the greenhouse. I have no expertise in this.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand, is it...
Yeah.
...get the legal...
No, because we, we've had quite a bit of interest in buying the greenhouse, but as soon as they find out that there's so many restrictions on it, nobody's really interested in doing that, and so I basically have to, you know, look at the property and know that, you know, there's not a whole lot I can do because of all the floodplain on it.
Okay. Are there additional questions for the petitioner? Mr. Courtney?
Yes. Why not run those lots all the way back?
We did, we did propose that, too, and I could do that. I don't have any objection. When I was with the engineer, we tossed around the ideas with the city and with the engineer. He just said it might get easier to be able to manage the property, having it split this way, because then that one particular parcel would be able to either build in the front or it would be able to build in the back.
Or come back and ask for two or three building sites?
I, I don't, I don't know if they could because of the floodplain issues. I mean, I don't, and I don't, I don't think that they can, just because, I mean, I was told that there's so many floodplain issues. When I'm, if I get this variance, it's not a guarantee anyway that I can build on it. I have to go to the MDEQ to try to see if I can pull certain portions of where they're going to build out of the floodplain, so there's no guarantees on any of it.
You, you can build, you can split three lots, have three parcels without even coming to us?
I could do that, but when I was talking to the city, the city had said to me, well, I talked to the city and the engineers, and the engineers said, you know, people are not buying these huge monster lots anymore, plus the lots so irregular in size, and then you have all these issues with floodplain. It also, you know, causes those problems that people just aren't going to be that interested.
But three lots instead of four, you have one less parcel to worry about floodplains on.
That's, that's true. I mean, I, you know, I was going by the direction of the city telling me that people are not looking for these big, huge monster lots, and that was, you know, and that was the engineer. The engineer said to me, he said, if, you know, you didn't have all these floodplain issues, he said, you probably would want to try to split this a whole lot different, but because you have the floodplain issues, and people in general are just not looking for monster lots, that, you know, you don't have too many other, you don't have any, too many options here.
So instead of three monster lots, you have one real monster?
And again, you know, for me, I don't know how to, in terms of if the Board said, you know, that, split it this way, you can have four and you can split it this way, I'd say I don't have a problem. If he said, you know, give each portion one acre, because the lot, the, the whole entire parcel is about 4.4 acres or 4.4 acre, so it's a large piece of property, and I wouldn't have any problem splitting it any other way. I just didn't know, you know, I had to go by the recommendations of who the experts were, of saying, you know, here's this property, what would you say that I should do? And they came up with a whole bunch of different ideas. I went back and forth with the city and said, you know, what do you guys think? And they said, that's entirely up to you. And so I tried to present it the best way, you know, that I thought that would be something that would be acceptable.
Anything else, Mr. Courtney, for, at the moment, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's things about this property, as you know, I walked it pretty extensively the last time you were here, and I want to preference my comments by saying you have a lot of empathy with me.
Thanks.
I have a lot of angst with whoever did what they did to that property. That issue does, hasn't been discussed, it hasn't been put on the table yet. I would like to know what conversations you've had with anybody, the city or anybody else, about bringing that land back, the entire parcel, were usable? And then, secondly, if we're to, if we granted a variance for four 90-acre things, I don't see any access to that area back there. Will you, can you answer those two questions, please?
Okay. Bringing the whole entire area back, I talked with the engineers, and the engineers said that. For me personally, it is such an overwhelming, this in itself is very overwhelming for me, to bring an entire parcel back and to pull it out of a floodplain is so much beyond anything that I can take on financially as well as just mentally. It's just out of the question. And that back parcel, you said you don't see access to it. I think that it could be written somehow to say that either the home is built at the front part of the parcel or it's built at the back portion of the parcel. I, I don't know if that would make it easier for, you know, to say that, okay, we can split it into four, but, so that, you know, nothing is being built back there, so...
You had no advice or comments from city, city staff in regard to that, the debris and the, what's going on at the back of that property, or actually to the eastern end of it?
Well, the, the big hill that's back there with all of the, you know, trees and different things like that, we slowly had worked at it. We still have a great deal of work, but according to the engineer, he said that part of that land, or that dirt, that big hill, has to be used in order to bring it, and MDEQ is going to say, you can't bring any more dirt, and you have to shift your dirt and move your dirt, and you have to use what's on the land, or this is how I understand it. So that part of that hill has to be taken and moved into places that's going to be part of the fill for the, for those three lots that are up in the front. So it will be part of that, you know, during the time that I have to mitigate the property, if I choose to mitigate the property or just leave it as is, that, that hill has to be, you know, shifted and moved, and a lot of it will be cleaned up during that portion of it. of it.
If my memory serves, serves me correctly, there were huge slabs of concrete in that dirt?
Mr. Bloomingdale?
There was anything and everything imaginable.
Um, in?
Mr. Bloomingdale, if I could, those questions really don't pertain to what we can discuss here tonight. I'm not to interrupt you, but-
My mind, it does, but that's fine.
But we cannot make our decision based on what type of mitigation work might be done with those materials. I mean, it's, it is something that the city can address, but as a zoning issue, we can't really approach it. So if you're okay with it, we can revisit it later. I'd like to set that aside for the moment. It's possible during public comment, there may be nearby citizens who want to speak to that, and then maybe that time, maybe your comments or questions may better be, better served at that time is what I meant. But specific to her request, is there any, are there additional questions that you have?
No.
No? Okay. Are there additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Laramie?
So you are not wedded to any particular design on the site. You're primarily interested in getting four lots on that piece of property. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't have any particular, I'm not set to any particular design. I'm trying to say what would appeal, first of all, what would be best for the surrounding community? And, because I have always been concerned about that. I think that anyone that saw the property, they will see even in addition to the time you were out there, how much I have cleaned it up and worked with it. And so I know that with the engineer, he's saying, oh, you could do this, you could do this, and you could do this, and it would be a significant amount of building that I'm sure that neighbors have spoken and said, well, they don't want all that building. So this is sort of a nice way of saying, okay, this helps me be able to look at the property, break it into parcels that are sort of still manageable in size. And so I don't have a particular, you know, ski, you know, design. I'll go by anything.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Grant?
I just want a clarification on the drawing. Is that area on the drawing that's gray, is that the floodplain?
No, that's the driveway and, yeah.
Where, is there something, one of your drawings that does show the flood?
Yeah, the, I had a attachment number one, and that would show the huge amount or portion of the floodplain, if you-
Page 16 of your digital agenda packet, and I'll put it on the overhead as well.
The back portion, if you'll see, where it's kind of all clear white, that is not in the floodplain. The rest of it, the greenhouse, where that's kind of white, I'm pretty sure that's, the portions not in the floodplain, but mostly all of the ones that have the little checkered, there's, there's, it's got floodplain issues.
On that case, there, then the floodplain, I'm just trying to see on that, the floodplain does not, you've labeled your proposed lot splits as A, B, C, D?
Yeah.
Okay. It looks like, then, that, is D the farthest to the north? Is that how we've labeled them or not? I'm just trying to, I don't see clearly labeled on the drawing with the floodplain.
Yeah, D is the one to the north.
Okay. In that case, would the existing, so by splitting those, those other areas, that other area that fronts Coolidge into three lots, are those three lots that you've split, they are not in the floodplain? The ABC, are they not in the floodplain?
No, they're, all of them have partial, according to the engineer, he said that all those three lots, well, something will have to be done, they'll have to be mitigated in some way or another, because they are some, certain portions of them. I don't understand completely all the elevation issues, but he said every single one of them will have, are in, portions of them are in the floodplain. Some of it's not, some of it is.
Well, I'm just looking at it as a, you know, I'm not going to necessarily suggest this is your solution, but that back lot is huge, the back part of that property is just huge. Have you talked to any developers to say, you know, here's, would you be willing to sell this as, as one unit to a developer who would put a road in, develop it? Did any back input on that?
I have. I've had quite a few developers come through, and the moment that they see that they have all of the floodplain issues, they run fast.
Well, I'm just-
And then also, too, I know that before, at the previous hearing that I had with regard to the greenhouse usage, there were neighbors that said, you know, we don't want to see any type of a development there. And I took that in consideration when I was with the engineers. I said, listen, I said, you know, they've had a lot going on. I said, let's try to make the design as, you know, as easy as possible to, you know, make it as friendly as possible, rather than putting in a whole development to the south, because they did, the engineer had proposed something to the south. And I said, listen, that's just way out of my reach. I can't, I can't do that.
Well, even if you didn't want to put a row of homes on the south end of the property and have a road go in, you know, because that, that looks to me, I'm just, you know, again, not understanding all the floodplain issues, but that looks to me that it'd be the higher, the less, the more dry land on the south side?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that, to me, you could bring in a road, bring in a row of homes, make a small development. It would be contiguous with the, the backs of lots of the other homes that, on your south side.
And, and he did drawings for that, and he said we could definitely do that, but he said that the mitigation on it was, was very substantial.
Well, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Courtney?
I'm not quite understand, what do you mean mitigation is substantial? What does that mean?
When you have floodplain issues and you're trying to build on it, you have to be able to take and move, move land. So all of the land that has above the flood, floodplain will have to be taken and move it to places where it's low or whatever's considered in the floodplain to raise the land up. So you have to keep moving land from here to different places. And so to be able to do that for a whole entire development would just be a very substantial.
If you're building on the south side, it's not in the floodplain?
No, all of the south side, except for that little back portion, all of it's in the floodplain.
All of the south side?
The only back portion of it is, and he's only proposed one home, when we did the, when I worked with the engineer-
I'm looking at it backwards.
Okay.
The north side, then?
Yeah. The north side, nothing would be built on the north side.
Why?
Because it's, he said that that's, I think, like, a larger floodplain issue than on the south side. And you can't build close to that Sprague Drain.
I'm sorry?
The south side doesn't show floodplain to me.
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
I have a drawing that's on the city's GIS system that is remarkably similar to this, maybe a little clearer to read if I could show it.
It's deeper here.
Please do.
In fact, that one lots under it.
And, uh-
Okay.
Let me see if I can learn how to manipulate this on the screen.
While he's doing that, ma'am, one question I have is the north, if, on your proposed configuration of four parcels, the northernmost parcel, concern I have, and I'm partly pulling from my recollection from the last time this property was looked at, a couple of years ago, it seems to me that the northern parcel is not buildable because of the extent of floodplain. And that drawing he's bringing up seems to reinforce my recollection, is that the northern parcel, which is pie-shaped, let's say, under your proposed plan, are you suggesting you can build in that?
No. On the northern part where that part, it's going to be labeled parcel, let's just see, I think they, they have it labeled, the engineer has it labeled parcel D. There is an existing house there, and the house will stay. The houses, yeah, the house is really a nice little house, and it'll stay.
I see. So that's, I understand now.
So now these other parcels, the other three are where there would be, you know, potential building if it's pulled out of the flood, flood zone.
Is the home in parcel D occupied?
No, it's not currently.
Is it? You own it, would that be, just to understand, is that your intent to rent?
No.
Occupied?
No. I'm hoping that, depending upon, depending upon how I split the property, and that's basically what I've been waiting for, is to see how, what I would actually have to do. I intend to sell the property.
Understand. Okay. Mr. Court, I'm sorry, Mr. Evans?
Just in response to Mr. Courtney's concern in the discussion we had about the area in the northern part of the property, I can say that the legend on this map indicates that this northern area, the striped area, that legend says it's a 100-year floodway. I'm no engineer, but I'm guessing there's something different about property in 100-year floodway as opposed to the blue, which is in the 100-year floodplain, that there's a reason to differentiate that.
And that-
That's correct, there is. And, you know, the home that's built there is just essentially, it's there, you know? But to remove that home and rebuild again, they would run into a lot of difficulties getting approvals, my understanding.
Well, and perhaps that will assist Mr. Courtney and the applicant and-
Yeah.
Perhaps the exact standards, but-
That is one of the other reasons that the engineer said that they couldn't, because there's different levels of floodplain. And I guess that's a really high level of floodplain, that that's why they can't build on the northern portion of the property.
Mr. Courtney, you have another, more for the applicant?
With that parcel D, that house, they won't be able to improve the house at all?
Well, in terms of improve it, it's, it's a, it's a very beautiful home.
But you're in, you're in a floodplain.
Well, I don't know, like, in terms of improving it, meaning doing what?
Any, any changes.
Yeah, I don't think anyone will change it. I mean, it's a three-bedroom home, it's probably about 1,400 square feet, it's a beautiful little home.
I think the clarification that he is getting at is, I mean, if you're talking about putting a roof on, yes, but a building addition, no.
Oh, yeah, no.
That's what the difference is.
Yeah. No, no one would be able to change that.
Mr. Evans, something more?
I was just nodding.
Okay. Additional question for the applicant? No? Thank you for coming up. We may have you come up, but we have a few more steps, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What I'd like to do is I'd like to open, open up the meeting for the public comment on this particular matter. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone in the gallery who would like to comment about this matter? All we need to do is state your name and how you're related, whether you're an adjoining property owner, et cetera. Actually, we need, you state your name and address of where you live, for the record.
Good evening. My name is David Chingellis. I live on 1926 Buckthorne, which is the fourth property adjoining the southern border of the parcel.
Evening, sir.
Evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I, I concur that the current property owner has been sensitive to the residents, as far as I'm concerned, in my property. My concerns, obviously, are the large parcel behind my property and what would happen to that. And my thoughts are that if this entire property is so difficult to build upon, and it was at one time commercially zoned for the, the greenhouse, that why would anyone want to develop that further and build on that floodplain? I feel for this owner. Is there any way in which the city can consider buying this property to make her whole and create it part of the protective environment that is across from Coolidge? There's lots of deer back there, it could grow into a wildlife site, because it seems to be pretty hard that it's going to be able to be developed properly. I, I understand that's probably not something for this board to, this meeting to evaluate other than perhaps to consider tabling the current decision and thoughts of deference that something else could be done, both for the city to expand their wildlife preserve and also for this property owner. Those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the matter? If you would like, please come forward. Doesn't appear to be anybody else who'd like to speak on the matter, so I'm going to close the public comment section. I'm going to bring this back to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We do have two comments?
Oh, that's true, we do. We have one comment from Michael Waiter, if I'm pronouncing that right, at 670, 6772 Locust Drive. It indicates that he is a homeowner in the Forest Creek subdivision adjacent to the property in question. He indicates that he is opposed to the requested zoning variance. And that is a, that is a hard copy item I have. I'm not sure if anybody else has seen this, but I can pass it along. Okay. And we also have one in our packet that is, it looks like it's from Trelle Maureen, and her comments are essentially, we have no concerns regarding this issue, however, and this speaks also to something that Mr. Bloomingdale highlighted. She goes on to say that many are still concerned about the very back of the Coolidge properties that back up one neighboring street, and does the city of Troy have any plans regarding, regards to taking care of the, quote, as she put it, dump that was allowed by the previous owner associated with a gentleman by the name of Wilkop. And it indicate this has been an ongoing matter for several years. This is from Dr. Graham Bush, who lives at 1699 White Birch Court in Troy, Michigan. His comments are that the applicant had tried to start a landscaping garden center business on the land, and his comments are, assume that since closing down the flower business, he identifies the owner as Miss Morrow slash GPRZ Real Estate LLC, has been receiving rental from the two houses on the site while trying to sell the central part with the disused Wilkop greenhouses. The plot was advertised as a, quote, development opportunity. He goes on to say, I assume to create a small cul-de-sac with several properties. This is obviously the central plot has not so, probably because a potential buyer would have to, to address potential environmental issues. He, he describes it somewhat differently. He uses the term environmental mess, and to my knowledge, that is not something that's been determined. I know there's been concerns in the past about a dump, but the gentleman, the neighbor writes, he, he describes it as an environmental mess, and also most of the land is in a floodplain, and so has limitations on use. He goes on in quite a bit of detail. So this request seems to be an attempt to increase the split of the property into four plots, and has an economic motive, is his assumption. And he said, just trying to get through this enough for the meeting minutes. Indicates that he has concerns about the floodplain and woodland issue. And he has great concerns about the material dumped on the site, except I have to say, reading through this, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that he ever issues an opinion as to whether he's for it or against it.
I didn't see it either.
Opposed.
Is he opposed?
He doesn't, he doesn't come out and say-
No, he doesn't.
He says it in 5,000 words.
He, he does. He goes on a lot of detail, and I know he's concerned about what is on the site presently, which I know going back a couple of years was, talked about considerably during the public comment period, when the current owner purchased the site and began operating his greenhouse. But, yeah, he does not, I will, I will say that, yeah, he, he seems to say he's against this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Without using the words.
Right, yeah. Usually they say I'm opposed or for it, but, okay, I want to make sure the board's aware of that. I'm going to pass these two items through. I don't know if everybody has seen, you have this one?
Yes. We all receive copies.
Okay, I didn't have them. All right. One question I have for staff, and I think for the city attorney. There's been a lot of comment on the hardship description as, as stated for this property is that- One question I have for staff, and I think for the city attorney, there's been a lot of comment on the hardship description as stated for this property is that buyers of land don't want to buy necessarily large parcels, and that's why, one reason why the parcel plan is broken up into the four as presently presented on, on the screen. My question for you is, that doesn't, that isn't really a hardship issue we can use, can we?
I, that's a correct assessment.
Right, okay. Okay. Any additional questions for staff or comments and discussion for matters on the board?
Just comments.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Okay. Looking at the, the map, it does, I can see where you could just put a row of seven houses on the south side of the property, put a stub street in with enough earth grading and environmental remediation. But obviously, the, the petitioner has done her due diligence and spoken to seven, several developers, and also looked at the impact of that. And that, that is not a practical solution for this property. Given the triangular shape of the property, given the topography, I see each of our criteria for, for giving a variance being met. I just don't see this as the best solution necessarily. Problem is, is I believe we are also putting the petitioner into a catch-22 because she's already expended money on engineering, she's already spent quite a bit of time with the city's staff. This is the first step, then she goes to DEQ, but if she doesn't get this step, then she can't necessarily go to DEQ and keep the process rolling. So I'm curious, maybe Mr. Evans can answer this. If it's turned down, then she's in limbo, right?
No.
Well, if it's turned down, she's back to where she is now.
Basically, she'd have to use a lot of averaging rules or the stuff that's already laid out.
Yeah, I, I believe she's correct, and there could be many different configurations that could be applied. And I believe she's correct that if you want to invest enough remediation in, you could remediate it. But I think one of the questions is, is that reasonable, no matter who owns the property, for what somebody might want to accomplish?
Yeah, because like one of our other board members said, I have, I toured the property quite a few years ago, and it is also in the interest, it's already a developed property. It's a non-conforming development of the property, it is in our interest of the city to have it match the zoning that, that's applied to it.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Back to my concern. Practically, you can do, build those lots along the back of the existing subdivision. It's a financial consideration that stops it. If I owned the property directly behind this, I'd be, and, and the owner is, he's furious about that. It's not only a hill of junk, it's spilling in his property. If I remember correctly, he's built some trees to try to stop it and bent the trees over, this guy that did this did not let up. Now, that's all history, the problem is, is this is a disastrous piece of property in one of the nicest areas in our city. And in my opinion, to allow anything less than remedy, you know, correcting the problem, I think is a disservice to, not only to the, to the residents that live there, but to the city at large. I don't have an answer for this, I really don't, but I do have some, what I consider to be pretty serious concerns.
One thing I'd like to, to state about the property, and the last time that I went in the back was when this came up a couple of years ago. Professionally, I'm a, I'm an environmental engineer, and I want to make sure, in fairness to the petitioner, and because this goes in the record, terms like remediation, environmental mess such as the comments made by a homeowner nearby, have not been substantiated. There may be debris, there may be piles of material. I'm not even going to give you my professional judgment as to what I saw and think and know of the site history. I just want to make sure that it does, is not really germane to our discussion, and it's unproven. And I don't want to, the, the property owner, who's the petitioner, to end up with a perception that there is environmental contamination there, which at this point, to our knowledge, has not been identified. There's mitigation issues regarding floodplain that may or may not be able to be approved by the DNR DEQ. I don't think it's safe to say, based on the knowledge we have, the information of the site, that we can put that many lots there, that they would approve it, it's possible. But I don't want to give the impression that there's a development plan that we see that's obvious. Because I just don't think we know, I think that'd be a civil engineer who's going to have to figure that out, and, and that would take some sizable money, but I want to make sure we don't leave the wrong perception in the public record accidentally, and I think that's kind of where we're trending. Because we just don't kind of know, it would be for Miss Morrow or a buyer to investigate the site to figure those, those questions out. My, my opinion on this, or my feelings on this, is that I'm not confident that I really want to approve a zoning variance when I think it could be cut up into three parcels or so in which there's not a need for a variance. And, and generally, that's, that's where I feel where we should generally tend to go is not approve zoning variances where it's really not needed. Looking at what's been described here, to me, it seems like the property widths and such can still be met without doing this. I'm not, I'm not certain that, I mean, I'm not certain at this point that's saying how I would vote, but I'm not, I'm not sold on what I'm seeing here. And that's just my thoughts. Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned with four parcels, and I don't think she needs four parcels unless she wants to go through a plating or condo plating. But she can, right now, without us, divide, divide it into three parcels. And I see nothing wrong with doing that. I don't, I don't feel justified in granting a fourth parcel that's going to be basically in a floodplain. And one parcel that's going to have a monstrous problem, potentially a monstrous problem at the rear end.
Are there additional questions for staff or comments on the matter for discussion, Mr. Crin?
Mr. Evans, it appears, and again, without looking at an overlay, that the floodplain is in parcel, is it in part of B? I know it's, I can see it's going to be in C and D.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, is parcel B affected by that floodplain, it looks like maybe the northern part of that?
The way I read this map, and there is a legend, if it's white with no markings or overlay, it's not a floodplain. And I can put the.
That word there, it was floodplain.
Right, that's floodplain.
The creek, X creek.
Mm-hmm.
Or here. Is floodplain.
Mr. Evans, could I make use of your pointer for a moment?
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, thank you. And can you bring up the PDF sheet nine, which consists of the aerial photo? It's just that one. For those of you who are on the zoning board, a couple of years ago when this came through, I remember we, we discussed the use of this property with the greenhouses, and there was talk of changes and improvements in the front, and then there was talk along here the back and what could be done. And I know that there was, we don't have the minutes, there was essentially a line that, that was described or demarcated about here. Where everything east of this was not buildable. So as far as it was a floodplain issue or something, but you could never go like parcel, home, 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 home issues. And it was like, it was somewhere right about here.
I, Mr. Chair, that slide is in the packet, and I can bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
Without regrading it?
And this is from.
Without lots of it, yeah.
Yeah. And this is from the part of the meeting minutes here.
Right here, right?
When the board heard this since, yeah, in two thousand and twelve, regarding a modification of the allowed uses on the property relative to the greenhouse and the sale of plants.
Right, and, and we had two meetings on this, and I think we had about three hours of public comment from neighbors, I think that's accurate, about this area and the issues. But for those of you who weren't on the board, I think that's a few people, this kind of was the, the demarcation line, it was over here you could build something, and over here you could not. And I just point this out for clarification, because I know there's talk of always, what, what are our options down here? But I, as I understand it, there really aren't.
I'm going to move this because I believe one of the slides here. I can't read the other one, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The, the fact that you couldn't build back there was our setting up the line, that they couldn't expand the greenhouse and the product into the back. It wasn't that they couldn't build anything, it's that we wouldn't let them build more greenhouse back there.
But that's because it was a floodplain?
No, because we didn't.
That was right, it was a non-conforming of the commercial, yes, okay, thank you, thank you.
The expansion of the commercial that we were concerned about.
My apologies, I don't want to misconstrue this, but thank you, thank you, I know, I know that that was, we spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Going forward with the discussion on this, are there additional thoughts on this matter, or anybody interested in making a motion either for or against?
I do have one comment, I mean.
Sure, Paul.
In, in my mind, the suggestion that's been brought up, that could it be three lots that would be within the, within the code? That's true, but given the shape of the land, in my mind, it's outside of our judgment to what the, what the applicant needs and doesn't need. In my mind, we have to assess with the, with the applicant requests based on the geography, the geography of the land. So given this request and the geography, it seems that it does fit our criteria, that it's in irregular shape. The floodplain issue aside, given that it's kind of a triangular shape, so in agreement with Mr. Eisenbacher.
Are you?
That was just a comment, I mean.
No, I appreciate that, I have a question for you, is, is, your comments are well founded, I have no issues with that at all, but are you, would you be willing to make a motion to that extent?
I would, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the petitioner, and we have a second. I'd like to keep this now open for discussion, and this would not be to pertain to whether there should be five parcels, three parcels, et cetera, it's specific to what's before us. And I'd like the discussion to stay towards that, because it's, frankly, on this property, it's easy to get down other roads. So is there any comments on the discussion of the motion to approve?
Yeah, I want to make a comment, and it is going to deal with what they could put. She can do three without us, she can also do more without us by going through a plating, either condo or subdivision. So I don't think there's justification for the fourth one with the only, the only justification being economic.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney, is there other opinions on the matter of this motion to approve the petitioner's variance request? Mr. Eisenbacher?
I mean, looking at our, our definition sheet that we have, it specifically lists examples of irregularly shaped parcels and include, but are not limited to, and the very first item is triangular. And then there's another section that talks about the environmental impact, there's a big environmental impact because of the flood zones. When I read through the criteria and I looked at the petition, everything is met. I mean, I believe that if she wanted to, she could just appeal this to the next level and get the variance either way. I think the bigger question before us is is this the, is this the best way to do it? And obviously, her engineers have already come back and said, and she's been working with staff, and they've said, this is the best way to do it. It's a difficult call, just saying that she can do it with three, I believe ignores the fact that she is meeting the general criteria of getting a variance because of these hardships she has, it's not just financial.
Mr. Crin?
My thought, I, you know, she's got a tough piece of property to deal with, I don't envy her at all with what she's got on her hands. The, what it comes down to, to me though, how does the irregular shape affect what is written in our ordinance? And our ordinance says the average of the fronts, of the widths of the fronts have to be equal or greater than what's allowed in that district. And I don't see a hardship, I mean, if anything, it's, it's a benefit to her because it widens it at Coolidge as opposed to narrows, if, if the property narrowed at Coolidge, then I could see a reason, but because it's at its widest point at Coolidge, she's given every opportunity here to split it according to the ordinance, and I, I couldn't approve it because the average width to all the neighbors around in that, in districts throughout the city says you have to take the average, and the average has to be equal or greater than what's allowed. What comes into play with that ordinance is, when you have like a property on a curved road and the fronts are very small, then, then the curve goes the other way and the lots are very large, that's when you average those small fronts with the larger fronts, and then come up with an average that is equal to what's required. But here, we've got four lots, and none of them averaged together can even be close to what's allowed, which is a hundred feet, so I, I can't approve it. I, I think actually, you know, I, that's, she's got the advantage of having that extra width in the front end, and there's no way I can, I can see to prove it as finding fault with the property.
Thank you, Mr. Crin. Additional comments, Mr. Bloomingdale?
I think another issue with four plots is I don't see where the access into the back of that property is going to be then.
Well, it's parcel C, it, it has got frontage on Coolidge Road.
Right.
So you're buying like a finger, like a similar sized parcel to like parcels A and B, and then you've got this large
All right, here's one.
Rear.
Three, or is it four?
A back lot that would be yours to.
Okay.
Maybe you build a big home back there and have a big front area, you know. You might, you might not want that, but the one concern I have, well, no, it's not germane to the subject, so I, I won't, I'm going to stop myself. Regarding this particular motion, is there additional discussion, comments from the board? Mr. Eisenbacher?
One thing that the petitioner brought up is that with the current light lot line, which is the red, they can meet the minimum, it's because that front part is cut off by the setback of the road when they go to develop, that it moves the front line back, that makes it narrower, and they can't meet, is that accurate?
Well, I, I think what she's saying is, is when the property is split, the city's going to require the westerly portion of all that frontage property to be dedicated to the right-of-way to line up with the rest of the Coolidge Road right-of-way on either side.
Be given to the city, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's normal, that's normal for anytime anything like this happens. Now, the parcel to the north, because it's at an angle, it narrows down as you go further east, so the width of the parcel at the new front property line, that new right-of-way line, is actually a hundred and twelve feet wide. So when you go back the required fifty feet setback from Coolidge, which is where the ordinance requires it to be measured from, the width is ninety-eight point thirty-one. ordinance requires it to be measured from, the width is 98.31 feet wide. So I think that's what she was trying to say. And if I hadn't said it accurately, we can bring her back up.
So if they were averaging from the property line, it would average, but because the front gets cut off to give right-of-way to the city, it does not average?
Are you asking me to confirm that?
Yeah, because I'm seeing 113 plus 90 plus 90 plus 90 divided by four.
Well, yeah, if we were to take the measurements at the front property line, you'd get a different average lot width, but that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says we've got to measure the width at the, yeah, at the setback line.
95 feet?
95 and 3/4 feet.
Sure. Mr. Bloomingdale, do you, no? Mr. Lambert?
I was just going to say that this is a tough situation and I certainly understand the irregular form of the property, but as Mr. Krent has also commented, the angle of it is at the best end on Coolidge, so it's not like Coolidge is causing an issue, it's the triangular shape at the back. I think that, and I don't want to impose additional burdens upon the petitioner, but there might be better ways of approaching this property. For example, as Mr. Courtney said, a site condominium plan, which would allow the petitioner to have a little bit more density on the property in exchange for protecting the wetlands and some of the natural features on the site might be a better approach. And so I will be reluctantly voting against the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Courtney, you have a question?
No, just ready for the question.
There's no further discussion, I'm going to, we're going to have to have a roll call on this particular motion. Excuse me for a moment. Yes, sir? Are you associated with the ownership of the property or public comment or you're the owner? What I'll do, hold on for one moment, sir. Paul, to make sure I handled this properly, I wish Glenn was here, is his information, his property owner is probably germane to this, but can I table the motion, which we haven't voted on yet, to bring him up to allow him to comment, or do we have to finish this motion out regardless of its vote and then bring him up? What do I do in a particular issue?
I think you'd be safe in, if it's okay with the board, to reopen public comment for this purpose, but the applicant or the person accompanying should be aware, and the board needs to be aware, that the deliberation is with the board. Certainly if he has new information to offer or perhaps information to correct as to what the board is aware of, he can do that, but we all need to understand that it's the board's job to deliberate amongst themselves and not with the audience.
Okay, in order to do that, do I need to have a motion to table the motion or-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Courtney?
I'm opposed to hearing public comment at this point. We had the public up comment, the person wasn't attendance, he could have come up and made his comment that-
He's the owner.
If we allow it now, we're going to have more comment up here than back with the public again, back and forth. I think we're done with the public.
Okay, the only question-
That's personal opinion.
I understand your opinion.
There are other people here.
No, no, I agree, I understand what you're saying, I appreciate both your counsel and bear with me, sir, but we have to kind of follow procedure that we can rely on. Is my only question to you, Mr. Courtney, if you allow the question, is knowing that he's the owner, does that change your mind? He's not the public.
I thought the person that was standing up before said she was the owner.
Well, I-
And it wouldn't because he had the opportunity to talk before and he chose not to.
I assume that was-
At this point, he's hearing comments up here that he wants to come up now and argue about, and I don't think he should be allowed to argue, we can do that with ourselves.
We can argue very well, yes. Okay, forgive me for a moment here amongst asking the rest of the board, does anybody here have a problem with me, us setting aside the discussion of this motion to let this individual come up, or should we just proceed through? Mr. Krent?
I know for decades ago when I was in the shoes of the applicant, I was just told, sorry, it's closed, shut up, you know, I didn't say it that crudely, but they basically said, we're done with the discussion out there. And I couldn't re-comment on things, I thought, geez, is that really fair? So, you know, truthfully, I would have liked to have made a comment that was relevant at the time, a few decades back, so I wouldn't mind, but does that set a precedent? Do we have a legal thing that we start unraveling the whole process of this board?
I think the problem is you've already started your deliberations and to introduce new comments at this point, it interrupts the deliberation that you've already engaged in based on the comment, the public hearing, the petitioner's comments, it's been closed. I'm just not sure it's appropriate at this time.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
One thing I know that the board has done in the past is table items when it appears that it's insurmountable, give the petitioner opportunity to go back and possibly revise their petition. I'd be curious if that's what the petitioner was thinking. Introducing new argument would be a different matter, but I don't know how to ask him that before he comes up necessarily.
Well-
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Courtney?
Since the motion on the table is to approve-
Right.
I don't think he would object if that passes. If it doesn't pass, then he may want to-
He may want to what?
May want to make some comments.
I understand, but it's a chicken or the egg issue.
We still need a second motion if it does not pass.
Right. All right, well, my opinion on this is that I can't bring him up, because I think it opens problems for the future and I'm not going to allow it. There's always a possibility for the applicant to revisit by reapplying, and I think at this point, we don't have much choice. I may be wrong, but that seems the best, my best judgment. So, going forward here, we have a motion to approve based on the plan presented, it's been seconded, we have had discussion on it, if there's not any additional comments on it, I'm going to ask Mr. Evans to call the question. Is there any additional comments? No? Mr. Evans, can you call a question?
Mr. Courtney?
No.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Krent?
No.
Mr. Lambert?
No.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
No.
Mr. McCown?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
I'd like to ask the petitioner if he'd prefer to have it tabled or if they'd like to come forward with-
Well, we can't table-
So we don't kill it down and make them start the whole process again?
I don't think we can table it at this point.
No, you've already voted to deny, your next step, you can't vote to table it because you voted to deny, now there's nothing precluding them from reapplying-
Right.
With a different request, and they could do that.
Okay, okay, well, at this point, I would have to move forward into item five, but what I, just a minute, sir. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, in the past, I thought we were asked to give a motion to deny then-
You know what, we have done that and we probably should do that, yes.
Okay, if we should, then I'd make a motion to deny.
You make a motion to deny? You're making a motion to deny the petition for the variance as presented in the package of materials. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Krent. Is there a discussion on this particular motion to deny the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I think what you're hitting on here though is you can table the issue, you don't have to vote on this motion to deny.
Oh, you're right.
Table the issue.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, okay, all right, all right, all right, that's fine, thank you, this is a little out of control and I know he wants to speak and I want to give him the chance, but, okay, so the motion really isn't dead?
The motion to deny is-
Well, yeah, but-
On the table right now.
The issue is not dead.
The issue is not-
Issue is not dead yet.
Okay.
Until we vote on that and only if it passes.
Okay. However, Mr. Lambert?
I was going to move to postpone or table the motion until our next meeting to allow the petitioner to bring additional information to the table at our May meeting.
Second.
Okay, but wait a minute. Go ahead, Paul, seems like I have two motions floating here.
I think what we need to do is if the desire of the board is to, we have two motions, we have to have the motion maker and the second or-
No, you vote on the tabling or the postponing motion, that takes precedent.
Mr. Courtney's motion to deny, was that ever seconded?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, so Mr. Courtney can withdraw that motion?
That's what I'm getting at, I think he has-
The motion to postpone takes precedent, it's postponing that motion, the vote on the denial motion.
Okay.
I see, okay.
And if the motion to table fails, then you go right back to the deny.
Got it. So this is a motion to postpone the motion to deny?
Right.
Okay, so the motion to deny was Mr. Courtney seconded by?
Mr. Krent.
Krent. And then the motion to deny?
Table.
Table the denial motion was made by Mr. Lambert, seconded by?
Mr. Bloomingdale.
Gotcha.
Okay, is there any discussion on these before we call the question? No, good.
So the question's going to be called on the motion to table.
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. McCown?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
So the motion to table, the motion to deny has been tabled to-
May meeting.
The May meeting, which is the third Tuesday in May.
Now, this opens it up to recognize this gentleman, I can bring him forward. Sir, thank you for being so patient. Sorry for the confusion, but I have to present, just so you know, we have to do it in a manner that, and this gets all taped, is that is justifiable and showing that everybody is treated fairly and such.
I recognize-
I would like you to have an opportunity to speak. Now, you're also an owner?
My name is Perry Morrow, I'm the husband of Gail.
Feel free to speak, sir.
And I've lived through this for almost two years now, and I wanted to make a comment before you made your final vote, not to-
Well, we haven't done that.
Pardon me?
We haven't done that.
I know you haven't, but that's terrible in itself. Okay, I want to use common sense here, because sometimes you get so wrapped up into it that you lose the common sense, okay? Right now, my wife and I, within, and I think Paul will concur, that we could split the property three ways. Our intention is to sell the one house and then the remaining large property could be built any way you want, okay? And therefore, that would be, it would be better if you just agreed to do four properties now, okay, and move on, okay? Now you open it up to, we sell it to a developer and he's going to come in there with lots of money, build condos, the neighbors don't want condos, okay? So now you've opened it up to, and you've delayed one month, one month disaster, we're into the selling season right now, okay? So I think the easiest thing to do was to approve this, it's within, the variances, we're not asking, we're not asking for any privilege or anything, the variances allow you to split this four ways. Okay, now there was all this comment about doing this, building more houses, we didn't want to do that. I mean, if you split it four ways, the city gets four lots of revenue, residential revenue instead of three, okay? We win because we get a lot more money. Now, I don't know about the hardship thing and all that, my wife worked really hard and you all have concerns, and you brought up concerns about how the property was left, okay? My wife cleaned up that property, okay, cleaned it up really well, it's not totally done yet, we have a lot of hardship on that property. Now, by delaying it one month, okay, we're going to miss a buying, a selling season, okay? We want to move forward, sell the one house, use that money to maybe mitigate the land, but, you know, it's worse to let it go into three. We don't even, we didn't ever have to come here, sell it off as three properties, okay? I just, I can't even conceive of how anyone would reject this. When my wife took into consideration the homeowners and the city and everything, and all you're saying is, well, there could be better use of it, I just, I'm baffled, I'm just totally baffled at it. And now, what is it, there's nothing, I'm just making free comments here because now it's closed for another month? Is that a fact?
I think you're done.
Except you can still sell off as-
No, Mr. Courtney, I'll handle this. With all due respect, sir, I think you were a fool to ever buy this property considering my professional experiences, you bought a contaminated piece of land significantly. That's outside of the jurisdiction of actually the zoning board, but my professional opinion, which you did a couple of years ago to buy a commercial purchase without following through with your due diligence was foolish. But that's your own decision. What I can say is you want us to approve, oh, maybe three, four parcels, and you've got another parcel there that's got definite issues, that's been in litigation with the city numerous times, the previous owners, that's significantly impacted, that affected all the previous neighbors, and I don't think is really even developable or sellable. And what happens then? Do you walk away? That's one of my concerns. Frankly, the concerns that I would have is what's the betterment of the city? Your plan doesn't represent a hardship, it doesn't meet the definition of a zoning hardship, and that's why you didn't get approved, sir, and that's why you're on your way to make-
Take the opinion of your own city-
Don't point your finger at me.
I apologize, please accept my apology for that, I'm not experienced in your environment here, okay? But I think for calling me a fool, I lost a lot of respect.
I didn't say fool, I said you were foolish. Have a nice evening, sir. Matter's closed. Going on item five, communications, I don't have any, Mr. Evans, do you have any communications?
No, I don't.
Good, going on item six, miscellaneous business, Mr. Krent?
Howdy.
This particular matter is one that you brought forward, I appreciate you spending the time, the board appreciates you spending your time. Before we go forward with this, what I would like is to see if you would like to, at this point, lead this discussion, because you're the subject matter expert really in it. Thank you.
Happy to, thank you. In a nutshell, over the last, almost more than a year, we've witnessed various variance requests that at some point could have been handled better if we did a better job of writing our ordinance. So what I proposed, all I did was take the examples, I've got nine pages worth, I didn't add up my head how many cases that I've illustrated here, but the point is, what I'd like this board to do, hopefully you've had a chance to read through it, and I just wanted to ask if you could recommend that this be brought to the planning commission for their review and possible changes to our zoning ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion on a particular motion to do this activity, for or against? My personal comments is I think it's a great idea.
Good stuff.
Say good job. Excellent work.
Thank you, Mr. Krent.
We want this, we have to take a vote.
Right, exactly, we have a motion and we have a second.
In order, at the next planning commission meeting, this will be presented in the agenda packet? Is that what we wanted it to go to the commission?
Yes.
Next available meeting?
Next, and when they can address it in their work schedule.
Sure, we'll make sure they get, if it's granted, we'll make sure that they get it in their next agenda packet and then they can decide at what point they want to more closely consider that.
Okay, Mr. Evans, can you call the question?
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. McCown?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Moving on to item seven, public comment, we appear to have no one in the gallery, so I'm going to, well, I'll leave public comment open to if there's any board members who have anything to say, but there's no public. Anybody have anything they want to add? No, moving on to item eight, adjournment, thank you for attending the meeting and we'll see you next month.